Bring the meeting to order. Our committee with Hogan, committee with Naco will be joining us remotely tonight to a geographical location. We rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, the God, the divisible, and the remit to rest in its throne.
Rule call.
Mr. Hogan?
Present.
Mr. Lemay?
Present.
Mr. Naco?
Here.
Mr. Sheehan?
Yeah.
Mr. Bahu?
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Yeah.
Mr. Getcher?
Yeah.
Kelly, anybody registered to speak?
No.
Do we have any school committee communications? The student representatives at a sporting event, so we're going to skip the student presentation. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes of April 13th, 2023? So, do you have a second?
Second.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Naco?
Yes.
Mr. Sheehan?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Getcher?
Yes.
Do we have a motion to waive the reading of the warrant? So moved.
Second.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Naco?
Yes.
Mr. Sheehan?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Getcher?
Yes.
A motion to approve the expenses of $6,300, uh, yeah, here we go. $6,326,2965. So moved.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Naco?
Yes.
Mr. Sheehan?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Getcher?
Yes.
Do we have any report of the general counsel?
No.
Report to superintendent director?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, before I begin tonight, I'd just like to thank a couple of individuals who, who were responsible for the organizing and planning of our accepted students night last night, which was a phenomenal turnout and a great event for our incoming ninth graders. So I'd like to thank Lisa Martinez, Lisa Martinez, Chris Fode, Mike Barton, Jamie Costa, Sharon Cornelia, Tracy and Cornacio, our main office staff, Aunt Greg Haas, for all organizing and planning a wonderful accepted students night, and all of our student volunteers who were there as well. So thank you to, to a great team. And I'd like to begin now with my agenda. The first item on my agenda, I'd be seeking approval to accept two separate donations. For our first donation, I would like to welcome up members of the Gilpin family. So I just want to move this out of the way. See if all of you come up, or would you?
Just if you want to.
Sure. If you want to take a seat, we can stand next to you right here.
Is it fair to just stand?
Yes.
I was on a plane all day.
Okay. So the Gilpin family is here tonight to present a donation of $1,200 in memory of their brother and nephew, Jeff Gilpin. Jeff was a 2001 graduate of Greater Lowell Tech, who was a student in our culinary arts program. The Gilpin family has requested that these funds be used for the culinary arts students who are in financial need, or to fund educational field trips for the culinary arts program. Tonight, we have with us Liz Gilpin. Liz, would you like to say a few words on behalf of?
Are you on the phone?
Oh, I'm sorry. And we have Jeff's dad, Mr. Gilpin as well. We really appreciate your generosity and your donation, and please feel free to say a few words in behalf of Jeff.
For us, it was April 6th of last year. Jeff passed away unexpectedly of a heart attack. So it was a hard, a hard night for all of us.
Yeah.
But one of his biological brothers started a GoFundMe to help pay for the funeral, and a lot of people donated, and at the end, we had some money left over. Couldn't quite figure out what to do with it, and I don't know if it was David or if it was our mom who thought of the culinary arts, because Jeff, although he ended up in HVAC, cooked for most of his life, including in different restaurants and stuff. So then we decided that would be a good place for it, for it to go. We know that there are kids that don't have a lot of money that maybe could use some help. We know it's not a great deal of money, but we hope at least it will, you know, take care of some costs for those kids who may need some help.
So thank you for your generosity.
Rafael is also a graduate of this program. And we were so happy when he told us that he has never been in this office. We were thrilled.
I always wonder when he had his door.
That's because the discipline office is down.
I'm sure he was there.
So we want to thank you again for your generosity.
No, no. Thank you for everything you guys did.
And the culinary arts students, thank you. We'll appreciate this.
Well, hopefully, we can do it again next year.
Yes. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Have a nice evening.
Appreciate it.
You also. Nice evening.
Thank you, Mr. Gilpin.
Oh, yeah. Thank you.
We need a motion for approval.
So moved. We get a motion to approve? Do you have a second?
Yeah.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Naco?
Yes.
Mr. Sheehan?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Getcher?
Yes.
Hey, the next item on my agenda, I'd like to welcome Joe Domari and Skylar, Skylar Terrell, Terrell up from Best Fitness. Come on up, Joe and Skylar. Joe and Skylar are here tonight to present a donation in the amount of $3,000 raised by Best Fitness team during their campaign against bullying. During the month of April, Best Fitness held a campaign to raise awareness by hosting specialty donation classes, trainer client contests, and raffle giveaways to raise money, to raise awareness against bullying. They also provided a 30-day pass to Greater Lowell Tech students and staff and families. And they also came to Greater Lowell and donated some of their time to conduct workouts for our P.E. physical education classes. So we're happy to say that they raised $3,000, and this money is going to go towards the Anna Esalenian Scholarship to be awarded to Greater Lowell Tech students in scholarships. And we appreciate Best Fitness for their partnership. We look forward to continuing this and building on our partnership with them. We've invited them to come back to help conduct some classes with our P.E. students. And again, we're very gracious of your generosity, which will definitely benefit the Greater Lowell Technical High School community. So thank you, Joe and Skylar.
Thank you guys for wanting to be part of that.
Yes. And I think the cause of raising awareness against bullying is very well needed and very much appreciated, and we appreciate the money that you've raised in honor of Anna.
Would you mind if Sky got a picture of us?
Sure. Sure.
All right.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thanks. Yeah, we just thank you guys very much. It was really a pleasure. Ateah, who was the mom, came to me during the gym. I was actually cleaning some equipment. And she said, hey, you know, my daughter's having a scholarship fundraiser. Would you guys want to be a part of that? So I said, yeah, absolutely. And I was just going to donate, actually, I was just going to donate money in my own pocket, get a few of my teammates, and just kind of chip in and just do that. But I kind of thought about it a little bit more in detail. So we ran specialty classes during the month of April. There were, I believe, there were $10 a class, and we had, we told all the members, Sky helped me coordinate it with our marketing team and then, you know, everybody inside the gym. During the month, we also wore purple, which was Ateah's favorite color. So there were certain days that we wore purple and orange, because orange is against bullying. And it was kind of ironic that it was our, kind of our colors. And then we got Ateah's daughter's favorite color, so we wore like purple shirts during the month. We had members, some members donated a couple hundred dollars each during it, and I can't even say, we had so many people.
A lot of stuff, yeah.
Ton of things going on, so.
We did raffles for donations.
Yep. And then Best Fitness donated money too. So in conjunction between members, classes, just talking about it all month, we did raffle tickets, so we really made it a big thing. And we got to actually come and hang out with the kids too, which was, which is really cool. Like, it was fun to like meet the kids, kind of see that different dynamic, you know, some shy, some very outgoing. So, you know, hopefully, we can continue this, and we like to do this each April. That way, we can, I'd like to, you know, next year, raise $4,000, the next year, after that, raise $5,000, $6,000, and start to really make it big, because we feel as though giving basket to the community is just, you know, we have four gyms in the area, we have a ton of Lowell kids that go to our gyms, and it's just nice to see those kids. I know all of them that are coming in from Lowell High, Greater Lowell Tech, being a part of their lives. And we have kids that work for us too, that live in Lowell, live in Chelmsford. So, you know, it really was an honor just to be a part of all this, meet Joe and Lisa, and just how, you know, open arms you guys were. It's just, it really is awesome.
We welcome community partnership, and especially when it's going to benefit our students.
So hopefully, this goes to a good cause with someone, really going to help them with their books or tools and whatnot.
We're going to be giving their blood out to several students next week.
Be good.
Your thoughtfulness is much appreciated.
Thank you so much for everything.
Thank you.
Really appreciate it.
And please, we thank our friends to Best Fitness.
Absolutely. Yeah. Thank you so much for your time. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
Can I get a motion to approve the donation?
So moved.
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Naco?
Yes.
Mr. Sheehan?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Getcher?
Yes.
Next on my agenda is the recognition of our top 10 students of the class of 2023. This is always a special night. I would like to extend my sincere congratulations to all of these students and their families. These students have demonstrated academic and technical excellence, good character, a strong work ethic, and truly exemplify what vocational education is all about. And now I'd like to invite these students and Mr. Barton to come up, so he can say a few words about our top 10 students.
Good evening. Thank you, Superintendent Davis. First, I'd like to say that these students, it is my distinct pleasure to introduce them to you. They represent the class of 2023, and they're academic and technical excellence, not only in grades, but as their total involvement in the school community. They really represent a rigorous course load of work, as well as commitment of long hours of studying and long hours of preparation, not only for their senior, but all four years. So they should be congratulated, and here we are tonight to do that. I'd like to begin with our top 10 student. Jerian Javier is the son of Ronaldo and Jeaneth Javier of Drakett. He is the 10th-ranked student in the class of 2023. His technical program of study is computer-aided drafting and design. He has maintained a rigorous course of studies, including honors, dual enrollment, and advanced placement courses. His school and community activities include the swim team, of which he is the captain, the yearbook club, National Honor Society, of which he is the president. He also has included the swim team varsity MVP and the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship. He plans to attend Worcester Poly Technical Institute to pursue a degree in aerospace engineering. The 10th-ranked student in the class of 2022, 2023, excuse me, Jerian Javier. Congratulations. A number of our students were unable to be here tonight due to other commitments, so I'm pleased to introduce the class of 2023, 9th-ranked student Evangelina Ayala. Evangelina Ayala is the daughter of Michelle and Jose Alala of Drakett. She is ranked 9th in the class of 2023. Her technical programming program is marketing education, and she has maintained a rigorous course of study, which includes dual enrollment, advanced placement, and honors classes. She is a school and community volunteer in numerous activities, including National Technical Honor Society, the Wish Project, 2022 volunteer, as well as the Boston Church of Christ in Lowell. She is also the recipient of the following awards: perfect attendance all four years, high honor roll in the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship. She plans to attend the University of Massachusetts Lowell, where she will major in nursing, with the ultimate goal of becoming a pediatric nurse. The 9th-ranked student in the class of 2023, Evangelina Ayala. Again, Gabrielle Rudy is unable to be here tonight. She is the daughter of Lisa Rudy and Kevin Higgins of Lowell, and she is the 8th-ranked student in the class of 2023. She has maintained an incredibly rigorous course of study, including honors, dual enrollment, and advanced placement courses, and she is a marketing education student. Her community activities include National Honor Society, art club, peer mentoring, a food bank volunteer, and 8th-grade tour leader during the summertime. She is also the recipient of the following awards: the Top Marketing Education Award in grades 10 and 11, the Top AP English Language and Composition Student Award, the Top Anatomy and Physiology Student Award, the Second Precalculus Student Award, the Dean Scholarship from the University of Massachusetts Lowell, and the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship. She is happy to say she chose Greater Lowell Tech, because she has made lots of connections with teachers and developed deep friendships, which she hopes will last a lifetime. She enjoys nature and hikes in the woods. She also plans to attend the University of Massachusetts to pursue a career in nursing. The number 8th-ranked student in the class of 2023, Gabrielle Rudy. Sarey Chana Duong is unable to be here tonight. She is the daughter of Saren Duong and Somali Mom Antony of Lowell. She is ranked 8th in the class of 2023. Her technical program of study is medical assisting, and she has taken honors, dual enrollment, and advanced placement courses. She has also been involved in National Honor Society, as well as volunteering at numerous school and local events. She maintains a cooperative education placement position at CVS Pharmacy in Lowell. She is also the recipient of high honor roll, outstanding achievement in physics, special recognition geometry, science fair participation 2021, 2022, and 2023, perfect attendance for all four years, and the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship. She plans to study at University of Massachusetts Lowell, where she's going to pursue a plan of study in biology, where she hopes to build on her time as a pharmacist through her cooperative education placement program. She is the 8th-ranked student in the class of 2023, Sarey Chana Duong. Amanda Diogo. Amanda Diogo is the daughter of Danielle and Rodrigo Diogo of Lowell. She is ranked 7th in the class of 2023. Her program of study is information technology services, where she has held multiple certifications, as well as a rigorous course of study, including honors and advanced placement courses. She is involved in a number of activities throughout the school during her four years, including Skills USA, where she serves as the chapter executive council historian, reporter, and media specialist. She is also a member of the National Technical Honor Society, as well as the varsity dance team and the dance club. Her activities include Letters for Rose writing project, science fair participant, as well as a volunteer at the Bay State Marathon, Friendly Locker Notes Initiative, a graduation volunteer, as well as participating in Girls in Science, Earthwatch Marine Bioacoustic Research, as well as Girls in Science. And she has been dancing as a competitive dancer since she was six years old. She is also deeply involved or loves UMass Lowell basketball and hockey. Amanda also works in project learning of Portuguese. In her free time, she enjoys acrylic painting. She is also the recipient of a number of awards and scholarships, including perfect attendance, high honor roll, Skills USA Gold Medal in 3D visualization and animation, Science Fair Bronze Medal Information Technology Services Special Recognition Award, AP Environmental Science Special Recognition, Skills USA Fall State Leadership Awards, as well as the Technical Skills Rising Star Award, Technical Skills Display Silver Medal, the Skills USA Senior Adventures in Leadership Credentials Award, as well as the UMass Lowell National Excellence Scholarship, the WPI Presidential Scholarship, and John and Abigail Adams Scholarship. Quite an achievement. She plans to pursue a degree in environmental engineering at the University of Massachusetts Lowell, where she plans to embark on a career in developing green and sustainable technology. The 7th-ranked student in the class of 2023, Amanda Diogo. Tammy May. Tammy May is unable to be here tonight. Tammy May is the daughter of Chanthe Locke and McCoy May of Lowell. She is ranked the 6th student in the class of 2023. Tammy chose medical assisting as her technical program. She has maintained a rigorous course of study, including honors, dual enrollment, advanced placement courses. She is also a member of National Honor Society, as well as the National Technical Honor Society. She enjoys volunteering her time to work at her temple, as well as Lowell General Hospital in their blood drawing program. She has worked at Greater Lowell Tech's Back to School Night, as well as our Craft Fair. Tammy likes to maintain a healthy balance between school and home. She has enjoyed her time at Greater Lowell Tech, commenting that she has made good friends that she expects to be long-lasting. She's enjoyed the challenging courses Greater Lowell has offered, and also wants us to know that she enjoys reading for pleasure, which she found here in her English classes. Tammy is the recipient of the following awards: honors, English III award, outstanding achievement Algebra II honors award, Dean's Excellent Scholarship from UMass Lowell. She plans to pursue an undergraduate degree in nursing at University of Massachusetts Lowell, and she plans to travel as a nurse. The 6th-ranked student in the class of 2023, Tammy May. Elizabeth Hughes. Elizabeth Hughes is the daughter of Allison Hughes of Drakett. She is ranked 5th in the class of 2023. Elizabeth's technical program of study is information technology services, where she's earned multiple certifications. She has also maintained a rigorous plan of study, which includes honors and advanced placement and dual enrollment courses. Elizabeth's school and community activities include Skills USA, where she serves both as the Massachusetts State Vice President and the Massachusetts Representative to the Board of Directors. She is also a National Honor Society and National Technical Honor Society member, a member of the swim and dive team, the Merrimack Valley Food Bank volunteer, as well as the Drakett Council on Aging volunteer. She maintains a part-time job at Fort Oaks Country Club, where she works as a banquet server. Elizabeth is the recipient of the following awards and scholarships: the daughter of American Revolution Good Citizens Award, October Student of the Month, President's Volunteer Service Award, the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship, and was awarded the Air Force ROTC Commander Scholarship to attend UMass Lowell. Elizabeth has also earned numerous Microsoft certifications. She was also part of the Washington Leadership Training Unit through Skills USA, which was conducted by a naval officer, who inspired her to learn more about historical monuments, as well as civic leadership. In her part-time and her free time, she enjoys reading British literature and American literature, and she also collects vinyl records, including classic 80s rock music, including Ozzy Osbourne and Black Sabbath, which I think we can all relate to. Elizabeth's plans to attend University of Massachusetts Lowell, where she will pursue a computer science degree with a concentration in cybersecurity. She will also pursue a career in the Air Force, where she will serve her country. The 5th-ranked student in the class of 2023, Elizabeth Hughes. Thank you. Daphne Pratt. Daphne Pratt is the 4th-ranked student in the class of 2023 and is unable to be here tonight. Daphne Pratt is the daughter of Zanab Mansuray of Lowell. Daphne is ranked 4th in the class of 2023. Daphne's technical program is health assisting, where she has maintained a course of study, which includes honors, advanced placement, and dual enrollment courses. Daphne is a member of National Honor Society, National Technical Honor Society. She has also competed in the University of Massachusetts Lowell Mathematics Competition, as well as the Science Fair. Daphne's favorite activities include babysitting and volunteering for the Lowell Humane Society. She participates in cooperative education, where she is a pharmacy technician and a retail employee at Walgreens in Lowell. Daphne is the recipient of the following awards: special recognition in AP Language and Composition, outstanding achievement in health assisting award, high honor roll and honor roll all four years, perfect attendance grades 9 through 12, the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship, as well as Student of the Month. Daphne plans to attend the University of Massachusetts Dartmouth, majoring in nursing, and after getting her degree, she plans to be a nurse practitioner. Daphne Pratt, the 4th-ranked student in the class of 2023. Lucas P. Noel was unable to be here this evening. Lucas Noel is the son of Renee and Paul Noel of Lowell. He is ranked 3rd in the class of 2023. Lucas's technical program is information technology services, where he's earned multiple certifications in Adobe, Microsoft, as well as other software programs. His favorite classes were advanced placement and his dual enrollment courses, and his favorite subjects are math and computer science. He's a member of Skills USA, where he competed and medaled in 2021 and 2022 state competition. His technical instructor states, "Lucas enjoys learning and makes great contributions to class discussions. He will embrace any challenge, and is my firm belief he will succeed in whatever field he endeavors to go into." Lucas is the recipient of the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship, the President's Award for Outstanding Achievement, the Outstanding Achievement Honor Award in Information Technology Services, and he's been on the honor roll. Lucas's interests involve computer research and gaining the newest technologies with the help of gaming. He plans to attend an online program through Southern New Hampshire University to obtain a degree in computer science and find a career in cybersecurity, which he hopes to find enjoyable. The 3rd-ranked student in the class of 2023, Lucas Noel. Excuse me, forgive me, I have recovering cold. Molly Von Pumi. Molly is our salutatorian and the class of 2023. Molly is the daughter of Avi and Puvan Von Pumi of Lowell. Molly's chosen technical program of study is medical assisting, where she has maintained a rigorous course of study, including dual enrollment and advanced placement courses. She is a member of the dance team, National Honor Society, National Technical Honor Society, the student council, as well as a student ambassador. Molly's activities include participating in the recycling club and helping as a caregiver for her family. Molly enjoys reading fantasy fiction and historical nonfiction. She also participates in the cooperative education program, where she works as a medical assistant for New England Foot and Ankle. Molly is the recipient of the Dual Enrollment Chemistry Award, High Honor Roll Award, Perfect Attendance, Student of the Month, as well as the AP Biology Achievement Certificate. Molly has also earned the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship, as well as the President's Award for Academic Excellence. Molly plans to pursue an undergraduate degree in biological sciences at the University of Massachusetts Lowell. In the future, she hopes to pursue a career as a cardiothoracic surgeon and stay connected to Greater Lowell Technical High School community and the friends she has made here. The 2nd-ranked student and the salutatorian of the class of 2023, Molly Von Pumi. Ashley Santos. Ashley Santos is the 1st-ranked student and the valedictorian of the class of 2023. Ashley Santos is the daughter of Shayla and Scott Santos of Drakett. Ashley is ranked number 1 as the valedictorian of the class of 2023. She has enrolled in information technology services, where she has earned multiple certifications and has included a challenging level of courses, including dual enrollment, advanced placement, and honors classes. She is a member of National Honor Society and National Technical Honor Society, a drama club member and performer, as well as a Skills USA member and competitor, a varsity soccer player. Ashley was named Defensive MVP, Homecoming Defensive MVP in 2021, as well as the CAC All-Star in 2020. And she is a competitive varsity lacrosse player, as well as earning the Most Improved Player Award in 2021. She also works part-time at Market Basket and seasonally at Canterbury Lake Park. Ashley is the recipient of the following academic and technical awards: high honor roll, honor roll, all terms, all four years, Skills USA Programming and Web Design District Competition, 3rd place in 2020, Skills USA Programming and Web Design District Competition, 2nd place in 2021. Ashley was recently honored with the Massachusetts Association of Vocational Administrator Outstanding Vocational Student of the Year Award, and she will be receiving the President's Award for Academic Excellence this year, as well as the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship. Ashley has been accepted at the University of Massachusetts Lowell, where she plans to pursue a degree in computer science with a focus on cybersecurity. Ashley Santos, the 1st-ranked student and the valedictorian of class of 2023. Congratulations to all of the students here and the students who were not able to be here, and congratulations to their parents as well and their families.
All of you should be proud of yourselves and proud of your accomplishments, and we want to wish you the best of luck in the future. And know that Greater Lowell will always be a home that you can come back to. And to you as families, we appreciate your partnership over the last four years. Without your support and your partnership, your students would not be the success that they are today. So you all deserve a round of applause.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Congratulations again.
Thank you. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Thank you.[1795.83]
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Great job.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
It was perfect. Thank you. Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I congratulate the City of Lowell this show.
You know, the City of Lowell could use these kids for cybersecurity, obviously.
I'm not going down there.
You can't, I can't.
Was that a Rudy or a me?
Ah, it was. It is.
Okay, the next item. The next item on my agenda is the Cooperative Education Report. The April report is provided in your packets. And the report indicates a total of 253 students out on co-op, 179 senior students, representing 34% of the class of 2023, and 74 junior students, representing 13% of the class of 2024. And that is my cooperative education report. The next item on my agenda, I'll be seeking your approval to offer senior students the ability to purchase their Chromebooks that they are currently using for the price of $1. This is something we've offered over the past few years to our senior students. The version of the Chromebooks that they're currently using will no longer be supporting Google, so it would be not useful next year. This means that they will not produce updates to security or the Google platform on their devices. As a matter of maintaining safety in the district network, we would not support these on our network because they couldn't maintain safety on the computers. However, by allowing students to purchase this Chromebook for $1, they could carry a student through another year, potentially longer on their own for their own personal use. But to carry them, since they will not allow us to secure the device on our network, we would rather we sell them to them for $1 that they perhaps could use outside of school for their own personal use.
Great. Can I get a motion to allow the seniors to purchase the Chromebook for $1?
Mr. Hogan?
Absolutely.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Naco?
Yes.
Mr. Sheehan?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Getche?
Yes.
The next item on my agenda, I'll be seeking approval for the 2023 through 2026 Vocational Technical Health and Safety Plan. The major revision to this plan is the addition of individual cluster department health and safety plans, including a cooperative education health and safety plan. This was a requirement that was recently instituted by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. So to remain in compliance with their regulations, we have developed health and safety plans for each of our 23 technical programs, and they have been included in this document.
Can I get a motion to approve the 2023-2026 vocational technical health?
Mr. Hogan?
Yep.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Naco?
Yes.
Mr. Sheehan?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Getche?
Yes.
And so I'd just like to ask Mr. Chairman to go out of order before I call Assistant Superintendent Principal Mr. Barton up. So I'd like to go out of order and ask that we move to the calendar item on the agenda. And I am proposing asking for your approval for the 23-24 school year calendar for Great Elle Technical High School. This calendar is included in your package. And does anyone have any questions?
Any questions? Can I get a motion to approve the 2023-2024 school calendar?
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Naco?
Yes.
Mr. Sheehan?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Getche?
Yes.
And now I'd like to ask Assistant Superintendent and Principal Mr. Barton to join us to provide information regarding out-of-state travel requests and any questions regarding these requests. I think Mr. Barton has someone joining him this evening.
Right.
Good evening again. So I have three out-of-state traveler requests. The first traveler request is to attend the High Five Edge of Leadership Program, which is in Brattleboro, Vermont, from August 1st to August 3rd. The cost of the trip is $13,000. There's interest of 21 students attending with four staff members. That includes meals, lodging, and training for three days. Just a little description about it. The Edge of Leadership Program is tied to Project Adventure as well as a number of leadership programs that we've been doing during the summer and during the school year, which involves outdoor activities, reflection activities, leadership activities, as well as problem solving and things of that nature. I will just speak briefly and say that last year we sent a group of students there. They came back with incredible enthusiasm. But I have invited this evening Ava Ziegus, who is a 10th-grade marketing student, and she's going to do a much better job than I can. So I'm going to let her read her statement, and I think you'll enjoy her much more than you'll enjoy me, so.
Hi, Ava.
Hi. How you doing?
Good. How are you? Um, okay. I'm kind of nervous, but it's okay.
I'm going to move this over for you. You'll do great.
Okay. I wrote this like I was talking to one of my friends, but it's great. So I suffer from what my friends and I call PCD, or post-camp depression. That's a joke. For about two or more weeks after I've attended any amount of time at MBC, which is a Greek Orthodox youth camp that I attend, I come home and it's the same routine over and over again. Nothing to look forward to and hours and hours of end of me laying in my room all by myself watching TikToks. Last summer was different. After about a week I came home from MBC, I had to pack my bag once again and venture off somewhere I had never been before. But nonetheless, it was something to look forward to and something to dial my PCD back. Pulling up to the school at 6:00 AM and seeing that we had to leave was something different than I've ever experienced. It was a ghost town. With my Dunkin' Donuts in my hand, I gave my mom a hug goodbye and watched as my duffel bag was tossed into the van along with everyone else's. We started by getting into a circle and doing some icebreakers to get to know the group of kids that we were going to be traveling with. I don't remember much from our bus ride up. It was early, and we all slept most of the way. When we arrived, sorry, I pulled my bag out of the van, and then the next thing I knew, I was lugging myself and my bag up a giant dirt and rock hill. I am not very strong, and I remember all of us laughing at each other because we couldn't carry our bags up the hill. We went over some ground rules, like don't get hurt and don't do dumb things. And then we got to know the High Five staff and more about what we were really doing there. The experiences I endured over the short amount of time of two and a half to three days I was there was life-changing. I learned so many new things about myself and how to be a leader. This trip was for aspiring leaders, and when you throw 14 different people with different leading skills in the middle of the woods, you learn a thing or two. Being a leader does not necessarily mean controlling exactly what happens and when it happens. Sometimes being a leader is letting your team take over and figure things out themselves and helping when they need you, instead of giving out orders and expecting everything to be done exactly to a T. Being a leader is listening to others and taking in their opinions and actually considering other ideas that may be different than your own. Being a leader is having an open mind and being welcoming to all. If you would have asked me if I would have ever climbed up a 45-foot-tall tree, I would have said no. If you would have ever asked me if I would have swum through the dirtiest swamp you've ever seen, holding onto a rope to tie it to the other side on a tree, I would have said no. If you would have asked me if I would have walked through the woods by myself in the dark, I would have said no. If you would have asked me if I have made some of the deepest connections, I would have said no. No one ever forced me to do any of the stuff I just listed. There was never an "if you don't do this" kind of speech. I was only ever encouraged to take myself out of my own comfort zone and try new things to better and benefit myself as a leader and an overall person in general. This trip changed my life. There is not a day that goes by where I do not think of last summer's trip or the people I have grown to love because of it. There is a place in my heart that is there for leadership, love, and changing others' lives. This trip made that space bigger. I have grown to love my leadership style, and I have grown to love how I lead. By allowing others to attend and enjoy this experience, we would be making a bigger group of people who love to lead. It is often frowned upon or made fun of for being part of something in high school that is on a championship sports team. But this experience gives leaders to be something to be proud to be in. It gives a sense of belonging and a place to call home. After being stuck in my home because of COVID, this trip gave me an opportunity to reconnect with other people and nature. The view from this hill, I can show you all a picture if you'd like to see it, was heavenly. And being from a small town close to a city, I have never seen stars the way I've ever seen them in Vermont. This is my leadership chip. I received this at the end of my time at High Five with some encouraging words from a fellow attendee. I take pride in this chip, and I often resort back to my peaceful time in Vermont when my life gets hectic. High Five, mm, yeah. High Five shared a mission statement, and I'd like to read a piece of that statement. It's about geese and working with each other, but if we have as much sense as these geese, we will stand by each other in difficult times as well as when we are strong. I am a goose, just like the others in my flock. When I am tired, they take over so I can rest. When I am healthy again, I lead.
Well, I'm glad we were able to provide you with that experience and something that you can carry with you and share your leadership with our school community.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll be looking for a vote to approve this expenditure for this trip, August 1st to 3rd.
Edge of Leadership. Can I get a motion to approve out-of-state travel for Edge of Leadership? Appreciate your second.
Thank you.
Mr. Hogan?
Mr. Stewart?
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Naco?
Yes.
Mr. Sheehan?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Getche?
Yes.
Mr. Barton?
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Okay. The next out-of-state travel expenditure for approval is the, excuse me, the National Leadership and Skills Conference, which is held in Atlanta, Georgia from June 19th through June 24th, 2023. As you know, we've had tremendous success over the years for Skills USA. It is an integral part of the technical curriculum in our school. We have had success, not only at the district level, the state level, but now we have success or potential for success at the national level. So we're looking for approval to send chaperones, as well as the students who have qualified, to the national conference, which is a total of $39,660. That's 16 participants. That includes meals, rooms, as well as travel expenses and incidental expenses. I don't think I need to articulate why this is such an extraordinary part of our school and why it's an extraordinary experience for all. So I'm looking for a motion and a vote to approve this.
Can I get a motion for out-of-state travel for Skills USA?
Let's all move.
Mr. Hogan?
Yeah.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Naco?
Here.
Mr. Sheehan?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Getche?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. The last out-of-state travel expenditure is for the Directive Curriculum Assessment and Instruction, Mr. Haas, to attend a UTech Conference in Austin, Texas this summer. The cost of the expenditure, which includes the conference registration, lodging flights, and parking and meal allowances, is $1,879. Just to give you a little background, this UTech program involves science, technology, engineering, and math education as well as project-based learning education. Mr. Haas has provided me with a detailed description of the programs that he wants to attend during this conference. He, I would wholeheartedly recommend this.